You want to kick us off, Zio, through the announcements and then we'll move on to our agenda item.
Awesome. Thanks. So as we begin our meeting, we respectfully acknowledge that our meeting today is taking place on the occupied Coast Salish land. We pay respects to Coast Salish elders past and present and extend that respect to their descendants and to all Indigenous people. To acknowledge this land is to recognize the history of physical and cultural genocide and settler colonialism, which continues to displace Indigenous people today. It is also to recognize these lands, waters, and their significance to the resilient and wise peoples who continue to thrive in this region despite the consequences of displacement and broken treaties. Those who hold settler privilege in this city must work towards supporting the Coast Salish people and all Indigenous people using the various forms of wealth and privilege they do to it. So my name is Zio Alvarez. I use she-they pronouns and I am one of the co-chairs of the Seattle Planning Commission. We have a couple of announcements to... Yeah, we have a couple of announcements to members of the public and visitors. First is welcome. We're happy to make all commission meetings open to the public. Please note that the Planning Commission does not hold public hearings since the commission is an advisory body. We provide recommendations to elected leaders that in turn make the actual decisions. We encourage individuals and organizations to provide their comments appropriately to elected officials. This meeting is a hybrid meeting with some individuals participating remotely, while others are participating in the boards and commissions room in Seattle City Hall. This is our agenda for today. Also, sorry, this is my first time doing this, so some hiccups expected. And then I believe we'll start our meeting with the color brave space norms. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. I'd like to invite a commissioner to choose and briefly speak on one of our color brave space norms that they feel has a particular relevance to today's agenda.
Zio, I can share one.
Sweet.
This is next. I'll pick the practicing, practice examining racially biased systems. Systems are what are left after all the people in this room leave. I think that's appropriate for today as we continue to discuss our, our comments on the One Seattle Conference of Plan Update. We're asking a lot of questions, I think, questions that really get at, you know, who benefits from this plan, who may be disadvantaged, and kind of what zoning reforms could help boost some of the objectives of the plan that we're aiming for. So I will leave it at that.
Thanks, Nick. If there are no amendments or modifications, I suggest we all agree to these norms. All right. Hearing none. With that, we'll do a quick round of introductions. I'll start us off, well, I sort of already started us off, but Zio Alvarez, my pronouns are she-they. I live in White Center Highland Park and I work as a designer at an architecture firm in downtown Seattle. I'll pass it to Cecilia.
Good morning, Cecilia, she/her pronouns. After eight years living in Roswell, I'm moving to Capitol Hill on Saturday. And I work in disability advocacy on transportation and housing. And I will pass it. I'm sorry, I can't see. I'll pass it over to Dylan. To Dylan S.
Morning, everyone. My name is Dylan Stevenson. I use she-they pronouns. And I have also just recently moved, so I now live in the Chinatown International District. And for my day job, I am an assistant professor in urban planning at U-Dub. And I will pass it on to Dylan G.
Dylan Wasecki, I use he/him pronouns. I live in Central Districts. Architecture, urban designer. Perk and Seesman. Multi-family residential and urban infrastructure agents. And we'll pass it on to, yeah, Michaela.
Good morning, Michaela Duffer, and she/her pronouns. I work in affordable housing policy and planning and I live in Capitol Hill. And welcome to my new neighbor Cecilia, to the best neighborhood in Seattle. And with that, I pass it over to Nick.
Good morning, Nick Whipple. I use he/him pronouns. I live in West Seattle in the North Del Ridge neighborhood. And for my day job, I am a city planner on the east side. Let's go to Rebecca.
Hi, Rebecca Brune, she/her pronouns. I haven't moved, but I recently learned that instead of Crown Hill, I technically live in Whittier Heights. So that was news to me. And for my day job, I work at Sound Transit as a senior project manager for transit-oriented development. And I will pass it to Julia.
I had a feeling that was coming. Hi, everyone. Julia Jinnon-Shields, she/her. I live in Ballard and I'm a community planner focused on equity and engagement for my day job. And I will pass it to, let's see, Rose.
Morning, all. Rose Lou Taylor-Witson, pronouns, item. I'm up in Lipton Springs, North Gate area, and I work as a professional wetland biologist and permitting specialist for Jacobs for my day job. I'll pass to Radhika.
Hi, everyone. I'm Radhika Nair. I use she/her pronouns. I live in Wedgewood in North Seattle. And for my day job, I'm a city planner. And I actually can't tell who hasn't gone yet, so I'll pass it back to staff.
Thanks, Radhika. Matt.
Hi, everybody. Matt Malloy, he/him pronouns. As part of the Get Engaged program, this is going to be my last meeting for a little while, which is sad. I live in the Green Lake neighborhood and I work at a restaurant and substitute teach.
Olivia. Matt H just joined us.
Oh, awesome.
Talk, Matt. Go ahead. Matt's listening. It's a bad connection. Okay, I know he's traveling, so I will go. Hi, everyone. Olivia Baker, I use she/her pronouns and staff to the Planning Commission.
Good morning. I'm John Hoy. I use he/him pronouns and I'm staff to the Planning Commission.
And I'll wrap this up. Good morning, everybody. My name is Vanessa Murdock. I use she/her pronouns. And I too am staff to the commission. And I will turn the mic, so to speak, back to Zio.
Thanks, Vanessa. So on our agenda today, we only have one agenda item and it's our final discussion on our comments to city council, to city council, on the proposed amendments to the One Seattle Plan and the permanent legislation to implement House Bill 1110 prior to our vote on the letter, which is next Thursday, September 4th. First, we'll move to approve the August 14th meeting minutes. I'm still ask for a motion to approve those minutes.
Not a motion.
I will second.
Awesome. If there are no changes or amendments to those minutes, I'll call for a vote. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Any opposed? And any abstentions? Sweet. So just to briefly sort of give an overview of our upcoming commission meetings. Next Thursday, we're voting to approve our letter on the proposed amendments to the One Seattle Plan and associated legislation. This meeting was going to be held from 8:00 to 8:30. If you have not yet replied regarding your participation, please do so to Robin today as we currently do not have a quorum for that meeting. The meeting will be held online via the Teams platform. So yeah, get, get your responses under Robin ASAP. Our next full commission meeting is scheduled for Thursday, September 11th from 3:00 to 5:30 p.m. This will be a hybrid meeting with some individuals participating remotely, while others participate in the in-person, in the boards and commission room at Seattle City Hall. I think that's the last bit of me for a second and I turn it over to Vanessa.
Thanks, Zio. Just want to remind everybody, the commissioners on the call, to use the chat function to be, to be recognized by the chair, Zio, to speak. We have one commissioner joining us here in the boards and commissions room, Matt Malloy. The rest of you are all joining via Teams, so please do not put any substantive comment in the chat function because members of the public who are calling in do not have access to the chat. Members of the public joining on the Teams platform do, and we just want to make sure we're giving equal transparency and accessibility to all members of the public regardless of how they may be joining the meeting. I do want to note, as Matt mentioned, this is Matt's last meeting. He has been a fantastic Get Engaged member. Those members only serve one year, which can be a real challenge for certain boards and commissions such as ours, where it really does take a couple of months to get fully engaged, fully, fully understand the materials. And Matt has been an exemplar of an engaged member. He has one of the best attendance records of any commissioner and has not been shy at fully participating. And we are going to miss his perspective and wish him well in future endeavors and perhaps see him at the table in the future. Yeah, absolutely. And stay tuned for, for a gathering to send Matt off on his way and thank him for his, for his service. We are providing additional options to provide public comment. We welcome public comment. Public comment can be submitted to me in person via email or offered via our hybrid meeting platform, MS Teams. If offering comment during the meeting via MS Teams, please raise your hand in the Teams meeting to be recognized to speak during the public comment portion at the beginning of the agenda. If dialing in by phone to the meeting, please email me at vanessa.murdoch@ciel.gov and indicate your name and the phone number you're calling from so you may be recognized to speak. I'm not seeing anybody calling in on the Teams platform. We have received, I did receive one comment that I will read. And for those members of the public who are joining us on the Teams platform, please raise your hand if you care to provide public comment. And I will tag back to Zio to make some general comments about our public comment and then I'll read the public comment that I received.
Great. So the commission provides time for public comment at all meetings. A reminder that we do not hold public hearings. We are an advisory body. We make recommendations to elected leaders who in turn make the actual decisions. Individuals who make comments to the commission should remember that the mayor and city council make the decisions. We encourage individuals and organizations to provide their comments appropriately to elected officials. I know we have some members of the public in the audience. But I, I don't see that anyone has raised their hands to give comment. But I'll invite individuals in the audience to offer public comment and I'll remind folks that comments are kept to two minutes in our meetings.
Thanks, Zio. We don't have any members of the public here in the boards and commissions room. And I too am not seeing any raised hands by those members of the public joining us on the Teams platform. So I will just go ahead and read the public comment that I did receive via email. Hello, I would like to respectfully request that the Whittier Neighborhood Center Western Boundary be moved half a block to the east between Northwest 75th and Northwest 77th so that the alley between 16th Avenue Northwest and 17th Avenue Northwest becomes the boundary instead of 17th Avenue Northwest itself. This is a more logical boundary because it provides clear separation between potential high rises on 16th and homes on 17th and also avoids the potential of homes on the west side of 17th having to face high rises across the street from them. In fact, since there are currently no high rises north of 65th on 17th, it would make sense to move the boundary eastward to the alley all the way down to 65th. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Linda Giddens. And that concludes our public comment.
Thank you, Vanessa, for reading that and thank you to that member of the public for offering their perspective. So next up is our only agenda item, which is our final discussion on our comments to the, comments on the proposed amendments to the One Seattle Plan and the permanent legislation to implement House Bill 1110. So the commission staff is going to walk us through the fourth draft of the comments from this body on the plan and the legislation. We have until 9:00 a.m. for this topic and I'll turn it over to staff.
Thanks, Zio. So I'm just going to give a brief recap of the timeline of where we are in this process. We, next slide, please. Yep, takes a minute. August 4th of this year, city council proposed amendments to the One Seattle Plan and the associated legislation to implement House Bill 1110, otherwise known as the MIDE, Middle Housing Bill. There will be a public hearing on September 12th and September 17th through 19th, city council select committee will vote on one of those three days on the One Seattle Plan and permanent legislation to implement House Bill 1110 as well as consider amendments that have been, that were introduced on August 4th and perhaps changed in response to public comment and coordination among city council members. After the city council votes, after the select committee votes on the One Seattle Plan, the full city council will take a vote either in October or November. That is dependent on any additional environmental work that may need to be done based on the amendments that are adopted into the plan. Early 2026, city council will take up legislation on centers and corridors. And in late next year, council will take up UJOM center zoning as part of the annual amendment process. Next slide, please. In terms of our timeline, it's been a tight month for us to process, review and process and understand the 108 amendments that were proposed by city council. We've had a few committee meetings to discuss those amendments. And I'll note that our meetings have been additive as opposed to iterative, meaning that decisions made at previous meetings, we have not revisited those decisions because we simply don't have time. As Zio mentioned, we will be voting on the comment letter next Thursday, a week from today. Quorum is needed to do that. We will then send the letter to city council and post to our website. We have been intentional in doing this a week in advance of the public hearing on the 12th of September so as to share our thoughts not only with city council members but also members of the public who might be interested in our perspective. The intent of today's meeting is to review the fourth draft of the letter. We will, as Zio noted, we'll have until 9:00 o'clock to do that. Please. Our approach to this letter, given the number of amendments to entertain, we want to keep this letter concise and cogent and speak to and keep attention of the audiences, those audiences being city council as well as members of the public. We decided to focus on the proposed amendments that address issues the commission has voiced support for to date. We want to note strong support for the establishment of neighborhood centers throughout the city and emphasize how those centers help achieve the vision of the Seattle we want to see as noted in the One Seattle Plan. And we want to acknowledge the amount of thorough and intentional work done over the past two and a half years by city staff engaging communities and individuals across the city to develop and revise the plan. Next slide, please. I'd like to request that if you're proposing edits, to not introduce new ideas and to propose specific language so that by the end of this meeting, staff, that meeting of Levia, John and I, have a clear direction regarding specific wording of the proposed edits as edits will not be entertained at next Thursday's meeting. So today is really the last chance to, to really hone this letter so that we can approve it. We only have a half an hour set aside next Thursday to approve the letter. I'm going to give everybody 10 minutes to review the fourth draft that was sent out earlier this week. I also emailed it again earlier this morning, so it's at the top or near the top of your respective inboxes. Next slide, please. Yeah, so it's 7:55 now and we'll give everybody until 8:05 to review that fourth draft with an eye to remembering we want to keep it as concise as possible. That has been, I received many comments from commissioners wanting to keep it concise and keep it positive upfront and to have very direct and quotable points that are understandable both for city council and members of the public. So I'll stop talking now and give you all 10 minutes and we'll reconvene at 8:05 to begin discussing the letter. Thank you all. Thanks, Cecilia. All right. Hopefully that 10 minutes gave you all a chance to review the letter, perhaps for the first time. What I would before asking people to put their names in the chat to be recognized. I want to point out a few things. As I'm sure you all know, the this fourth draft is significantly shorter than the third draft. The fourth draft is three pages. The third draft was seven pages. I want to thank Matt Hutchins for really honing down the letter and making suggestions with headers that you'll see reflected in that fourth draft. Want to remind also commissioners of the audience and what we're trying to achieve with this letter, which is really to inform the city council deliberation on these amendments. We were intentional in deciding to focus on those amendments that we that address issues we have voiced support for. And in fact, there are a number of amendments that in our previous letters on the draft plan that are showing up in some of the council's proposed amendments. So we want to be sure to acknowledge our appreciation and support of that. Also, in terms of how to spend the next 54 minutes to to get all of your input on on the letter. I'm going to suggest that we go by section. So if if let's start on page one with the first heading, line 11, adopt the final one Seattle plan in its boldest form. So I'm going to ask for remember for commissioners to note their name in the queue if they have a suggested edit for that particular subheading. And if so, please put your name in the chat. One last thing I forgot to note, but I did put in the chat. In the interest of time, we don't need as a group to discuss any typos, which there may be, or formatting. So the letter has not been put on the commission letterhead yet. And we will format it so as to make the sections distinct. It's been suggested we use bullets and whatnot. We don't need to discuss that as a group. Just in the interest of time, I'd rather we take the time that we do have to focus on any substantive edits. And also to please email me directly if you have suggest, if you do catch some typos or if you if you haven't already have ideas about formatting. So just to note that. And I am not seeing any names in the chat for adopt the one, the final one Seattle plan in its boldest form. So I'm going to move us and we can always loop back. I'm going to move us to the second subhead. On line 16, page one, support a robust, robust network of neighborhood centers. Are there any suggested edits for supporting a robust network of neighborhood centers?
Michaela.
Thanks, CEO. Yeah.
Yeah. And then Rebecca. And then Cecilia.
Um, just a few suggestions. There's a typo. Sorry, Vanessa, talk about typos. In the second sentence, I think you can just make it a little bit easier to read while still retaining the meaning if you, instead of saying to achieving our vision of all Seattle residents living in a great neighborhood, saying of our vision of a Seattle where all residents live in a great neighborhood. That's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Am I next?
Yes.
Yeah, just, I'm sorry I missed the Tuesday meeting. I wouldn't be mad about adding in like a sentence at the end here that says, you know, something along the lines of what is in previous drafts in, you know, and reducing the boundaries now does not serve the interests of the comprehensive plan and a vision for long-term growth. I'm not part, I don't, I don't, I might be alone here, but I'm not particularly scared of having a little bit of negativity. Just a little bit at the end, just to make sure that we are just making a distinction between what we are asking for and what is actually on the table upfront. So just a suggestion.
Thanks, Rebecca. Do you mind crafting specific language and putting that in the chat?
I do not. Yes.
Thank you.
I can do that.
And remember that we are, we're trying not to add too much content because we don't want to get back up to seven pages. Go ahead, Cecilia.
Yeah, I like fully support what Rebecca said. I feel like in the fourth draft, what got lost a little bit is like how important these neighborhood centers are to equity and sustainability. So at the the last sentence that we have, I would add to the end so that we have, they will effectively serve as the new frontier for where affordable and accessible housing can be built. And I would add, and are crucial to addressing a history of exclusionary zoning.
Thanks, Cecilia. Who is next in the queue? I'm trying to multitask here.
Dylan G.
Yeah. Also, yeah, similar comment to what Rebecca was saying. You know, I definitely appreciate the conciseness that we've gotten with this letter. It's going to be much more usable. Then I'm trying to, trying to very much limit what I suggest be added back in, but we did lose something with neighborhood centers. I think, and need to make sure that we are in support of maintaining or expanding neighborhoods and our boundaries. And we do need to make that point. So I'll I'll see what Rebecca puts in the chat. I'll try and write something up too, in terms of wording. I think it's also important that we mention, you know, supporting existing and and new small businesses. And so put something also in the chat there and see if that makes sense. I don't want to get this. I know I don't want to get this paragraph too long under neighborhood centers. But it is important that we somehow make the point that these neighborhood centers are going to support the commercial cores where they exist by having the right boundaries. So I'm going to try and put that into like a single sentence and I'll post it in the chat.
Thanks, Dylan.
Dylan S is next, and then there's no further names in the chat right now.
Thank you. Yeah, I think for me, it's in the last sentence of this section. I think changing the term new frontier would be appropriate. I think the frontier aspect really kind of calls back to like America's Western expansionism, which is really problematic. So I think just changing it to like a new opportunity would be a bit more appropriate in this context.
Thanks, Dylan. Topping back and forth here. So there are a couple proposals in the chat. I'm going to move this forward and then hopefully we can loop back. And I know I apologize because we're super time constrained. We've got 47 minutes left and eight more sessions. So I would like to suggest if if you agree with something that's been said, just put that in the queue or put that in the chat, agree with somebody. I would love to be able to give everybody the chance to say a word, but I'm worried that we're not going to get to the end of the letter. So I'm going to move to the next section, which is line 22 of page one. Respect the years-long process of broad community outreach that informed the plan's development.
Rebecca.
I just suggest adding on line 24, reflecting more recent and narrow feedback.
And Nick.
I agree with Rebecca's statement. I was going to also include narrow. I also wonder if reflecting is too soft. I know we don't want to have such a negative tone, but what they're really doing is privileging this more recent feedback and I would be supportive of trying to kind of just put a little stronger language there.
Thanks, Nick. See some agreement. All right, I'm going to move us along and hopefully we'll have time to to loop back. So we're now getting to the part of the letter at the bottom of page one where we support the following proposals, proposed amendments that would, page 29, keep incentives for more types of housing.
Michaela.
I think what we're saying is incentivize new, add additional incentives and not, don't remove these incentives. So I just suggest saying keep, replacing keep incentives for with incentivize more types of housing. Slight change, but I think it's more reflective of what we're asking them to do.
Thanks, Michaela. I do think we want to recognize though, there are proposed amendments, several amendments that do provide for additional incentives beyond what is currently in the plan and the implementing legislation. So we do want to acknowledge, yes, we support this, we support the incentives and we support further incentivizing. Just so we don't lose the part that we are supportive of of kind of a baseline and expand from that.
I don't think keep, and I don't think the verb is clear enough to an average reader, what we're asking them to do in the heading. But I do think you clearly communicate that, communicate what we support as incentives below that. Which all of those things together are activities that incentivize more types of housing. Or maybe you need to say pass amendments that incentivize. But it's not clear to me if you're asking them. I don't know. It's fine.
The line above does say we support the following proposed amendments that would. So I think the suggestion of incentivizing or incentivize more types of housing makes sense. Incentivize more types of housing is what I'm hearing. Going to keep moving us along. Page two. Line one, expand opportunities for small-scale neighborhood shops. Michaela. Sorry, CEO.
This, this one felt like had a lot of extra words in it. And I kind of, I kind of know why those words were in there, but it became a little bit clunky to read. And so I took a pass at a way to simplify the language where I have to turn my track changes off, where the section would read, allowing for a wider variety of small commercial establishments in more locations throughout the city would foster neighborhoods where goods and amenities are accessible within a short walk or roll. And I also adjusted the 15-minute language just because I think for 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 regular folks, just talking about the walk being or the role being something that's easy to do and second thought to do is more of the concept than the actual time distance. So I will put that in the chat because I know that there's a lot of words that I cut from there.
Thank you, Michaela. And I'll just note that the reason why it is clunky, very, very happy to have edits to make it less clunky. The reason why we are specific about more locations with operational flexibility is because there are, there is an amendment, proposed amendment that would allow neighborhoods, corner stores anywhere of any size. And the commission has not discussed no size limits on corner stores. And so we wanted to be specific without saying, without weighing in on we do or we don't support no size limits because we haven't had the opportunity to talk about it. Instead, be specific about what we have had the opportunity to talk about. So I'll take a look at your, we'll take a look at your edits. And see if that achieves, we don't want to be misconstrued for supporting no size limits because we haven't had an opportunity to talk about that.
That's, that is fine with me. I trust the, your analysis of what's appropriate to say with that statement. Yeah.
Um, yeah, I think of us on a similar vein to Michaela's edits. I just think in line one in the header for the section, changing shops to commercial establishments feels really clunky, but I don't know if amenities necessarily captures it. Right. But just more, more than just stores, I think is something we've talked about as a commission and the types of of services that could also be allowed in these locations.
Great. Thank you, CEO. And sorry if I overstep and call, call.
I don't know if this job is what, so we're, we're flying.
We're, we're, we're tag teaming, we're tag teaming these, the, yeah. Writing as a group of 16 is always a bit of a challenge.
Dylan, G.
Just a quick comment online to, if we do keep this language regarding more locations, more allowing corner stores, more locations with operational flexibility. I would say operational flexibility to accommodate the variety, just as a language point. But I know we might further edit this.
Got it. Thanks, Dylan. I'm going to move this along to line seven, eliminate minimum parking requirements.
Nick.
Just a quick add, maybe it would be helpful to note, it's a little shade, but that parking minimums are an outdated and significant barrier, just so we can also impress upon them that it's okay to lead and and move forward, move past something that is more outdated. And then I also wonder if we're trying to communicate in the last sense that we recognize that added housing density, it must be part of a broader travel demand. Is this more of a, and maybe it's the same thing to people, but more of a comprehensive travel demand management strategy or I'm kind of getting a little bit, it feels wonky, that last sentence, but I haven't spent enough time. But I haven't spent enough time figuring out how to make it less wonky. So maybe I'll think on that unless others feel like it's legible to them.
Thanks, Nick. I think that language is specific, specifically from a commissioner who's sadly not on the call and who works very deeply in travel management, thus that language. So we'll look for something that is a little
We're talking about.
We'll look for something a little more accessible.
Okay.
Dylan, G?
Yeah, just line seven. Trying to think through what it is that we're trying to get at with, with parking minimums and do we want, is it the cost? I mean, we, we may very well want to leave it as just parking minimums, but I was, my thought was the cost of building parking is a significant barrier to the production of housing. Maybe it's good just to keep it simple and say parking minimums and leave it at that. But I was, I wasn't exactly seeing the point made about how they're a barrier. And just curious if other commissioners share that, if we want to get into the cost or why they're a barrier by saying the cost of building parking is a significant barrier? Is that what we're trying to get at here?
So Nat, Nick is saying parking minimums are an outdated and harmful barrier that adds significant costs and directly suppress housing production. I think it is, it's important to put, thank you for that, Dylan and Nick. It does help to throw in the cost because I'm, I'm not sure folks who are not in the space of designing and building and developing and financing housing understand just how much the requirement of parking, how much it does add to the bottom line. So those are really helpful comments. I'm gonna move us along.
Oh, I was gonna kind of echo, I think it was Nick that said this, I, I, or maybe it was Dylan. I think line seven, we can maybe even just scratch that whole parking minimums are significant barrier. I think saying eliminated parking requirements, it's pretty straightforward in what we're asking. And we don't very much like build in a lot of reasons to our other folded points, like supporting evidence. So I think we're kind of like straddling the line of like giving more evidence to why it's a barrier. And also just like listing that as one point, I think we can maybe just scratch line seven.
Thanks, Nat. Sorry to not see you in the queue there. I'm going to move us on and I, again, I apologize for just feel like I'm driving hard here, but I want to make sure everybody has the opportunity to offer a comment. Line thirteen, page two, provide additional flexibility for accessory dwelling units. Any proposed edits to that? Thanks, Rebecca. Rebecca has to step away. I'm going to move us then from ADUs to line nineteen, change the definition of major transit service. This is also on page two. Thoughts on that?
Yeah, Michaela, then Matt Malloy.
I don't have a proposed line edit, but Vanessa, I was wondering if that was informed by any additional insight or learnings that you were able to get over the last week in response to sort of our, what are the implications of this?
I was not able to get any more than what I voiced at our last meeting. There was some mention of a transit-oriented bill, the number of which I'm forgetting. I want to say House Bill fourteen ninety-one. I read through that and didn't see any, any red flags myself. But I'm not a land use planner by day, only dabble at night. So my thought, I believe where we landed on the last time we talked about this was a consensus of just sticking with change the definition of major transit service, understanding that there may be implications we're not aware of, but, but still wanting to support what we see as would be the the desirable outcomes of doing that.
Thank you.
I believe Matt Malloy and then Dylan G.
I was gonna ask the same question as Michaela. I understand now why we're keeping this a little more vague than some of the other ones. I, I know that the state legislation is already passed for transit-oriented development. Do we want to mention that this would put us in line with state, with the newly passed state law? Or would that be too close to like supporting one specific amendment that's on the docket? So I guess that was my question.
And as staff, my answer would be, I don't, I personally, as staff, don't have a enough of an understanding of the implications of fourteen ninety-one. I know they, it would need to be implemented by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-nine. And I'm not sure city staff, city of Seattle staff have had the chance to fully go through what those implications would be. So I would be wary of referencing a state bill that we haven't dug into.
Okay, that sounds good to me.
And I think
Nick?
You're right.
Yeah, so one suggestion would be the title, the heading itself. Revise that to expand definition of major transit service. It's a little bit more clear in what we're asking. So we're asking them to expand the areas that are covered by the, by the, by this term. So that's one thing to consider, expand the definition of major trans service. And then I'm just, there's, again, we're, we're super simplified here. I'm just getting, not getting enough from the sentence that's here to explain what it is we're asking. And because I see what we're, there's a sentence, but I don't understand how, how is that gonna happen? And so I guess, I guess my suggestion was to revise the sentence to say, change definition of major transit service to align with definition of frequent transit service. Referring to bus routes with fifteen-minute frequencies most of the time. Now, the wording with that is, is, needs a little bit of wordsmithing, but it is what we're asking with this. Those are edit, I'm under, I understand it's wonky to get the terms out there, but that is what we're asking. And so I, I, I'm, I'm struggling between wanting to make sure we don't get too wonky and lose people by throwing out the term frequent transit, but it's what we're asking for here. So I'm gonna, I'll put it in the, in the chat again. It needs a little bit of wordsmithing, but the substance is there for consideration.
Thanks, Dylan. I, I just want to remind everybody that in this letter, we're not really asking for new things. We're supporting amendments that have been proposed by city council members. So we're, we're not asking for new amendments. We're supporting the amendments that we've seen thus far, introduced on the Fourth of August, that, that achieve these that, that address these issues and hopefully achieve what we are in support of. We are doing better for time than I thought, which is great. I'm going to work us through the rest of the letter and then we can circle back if needed. Page two, so after the definition of major transit service, line twenty-two, which is really a different section. So this is not talking about the amendments that we support. Rather, it talks about the, the proposed amendments that we cannot support because they would create more barriers to housing affordability. So this is a section that starts on line twenty-two, although it might be a little bit different because I've been doing track changes. But it is, the planning commission cannot support proposed amendments that would create more barriers to housing affordability. And there are, there's about six, seven lines after that. So interested to hear if there are thoughts on that. And I see that Zio does, and then Nick.
Yeah, I just wanted to suggest or striking the a particular concern of those amendments related to, and then the two bullet points, just because I think it's repetitive to a sentence in the conclusion. And that that's sort of almost immediately the paragraph afterwards and therefore feels a little too close. So either strike them here and leave them in the conclusion or leave them here and strike them in the conclusion.
Got it.
Which maybe we can talk about the conclusion and then I can propose again. Turn it over to Nick.
I think so. If we, I'm working under the premise that we're keeping the bullets. If we keep the bullets, I feel like it would also be helpful to highlight a particular concern, which we've been talking about, which is constricting some of our neighborhood centers, changing the boundaries. If it's worth kind of reinforcing in this bullet, bullet as well, very clearly that we cannot support amendments that would create barriers. And that is a barriers, changing those boundaries, reducing the boundaries, reducing the impact. Even if it's helpful to, to reinforce at the beginning, kind of the impact of the plan. Because we do note at the top that we want it in its boldest form. And so if there's a way to tie that in, kind of reinforce before kind of leading into maybe some of the particular concerns. It, it read to me like, I, I know these concerns are important, but they felt a bit in the weeds on the, the regulations and less on kind of the broader policy. So that's why I, I wasn't around, I guess, when those two bullets were discussed. So it might be helpful to get a little more context for me as well.
Thanks, Nick. Matt Hutchins has a comment. And so Matt, I know you've got some connection issues, so go ahead. And if, if the audio isn't working, you can type it in the chat and I'll read it aloud.
Okay, I don't know if you guys can hear me, but
We can.
Hopefully you can. Okay, great. Nick, I think the point here is that both of these amendments are they, the, the theme here is that they add administrative process complications to, so, so I think that's the thing that we, that we might want to somehow highlight. And we could like back off on the, on the, you know, calling out the alternative site plans per se, being so specific and just be, say that, you know, can't support amendments that add bureaucratic hurdles to the production of new housing in our neighborhoods, something, something along those lines. So that it's differentiated from the neighborhood centers.
Okay, that's helpful in my head. And I think even when you broaden out, just my view, noting that bureaucratic hurdles, sometimes it's helpful to have those examples. And then maybe that's a good way to introduce kind of, for example, this alternative site plan to demonstrate trees can be retained as a way of preserving that language, if that is really important to the group.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Great. I'm, I'm going to move us on to the conclusion. And I want to, so we've got twenty-two minutes left. And I do want to encourage commissioners who haven't had the chance or haven't chimed in yet. If you have something to say, please do put your name in the chat. So the conclusion is at the bottom of page two. And it's about, substantively about ten lines. So I'm going to read it to myself and invite Zio to maybe propose either removing, I, I'm seeing now on line five, which may not be your line five anymore. We have concerns with specific amendments that would stall progress towards achieving the city's growth strategy targets and goals to include, include, increase the housing supply citywide. So I put it to the group, if that is redundant. And if so, do we remove that in the conclusion? Or do we remove it in the previous section, not supporting proposed amendments that would create more barriers to housing affordability?
I'll just flag that Dylan was in the queue at the turn, and so I want to give him a chance to
Oh, I'm sorry.
You could
It's, it's, it's all good. I put it in the, in the, in the chat. It's just in support of keeping the bullets. I guess in line with what you just asked, Vanessa, I'm not bothered that I have both these statements in, I think having it in the conclusion reinforces it. And I think that's okay.
Thanks, Dylan. I'm seeing some different opinions on keeping it in the conclusion versus removing it in the conclusion. So are those? Matt, would you like to make your case? Or do others besides Matt and Dylan have thoughts on the pros and cons of either keeping it in the conclusion, which is slightly repetitive, but reinforcing or removing it?
Which specific line are we talking about removing?
We are talking about, we have concerns with several specific amendments that would stall progress toward achieving the city's growth strategy targets and goals to increase housing supply citywide.
I support keeping it in both places. I think it's different enough than the two bullet points. Just summarize, that's our concerns.
Thank you. I see Rose also supports keeping it in both. As does Zio. Okay. In the, in the, oh, somebody's Cecilia supports keeping it in both. Michaela?
I'm just wondering if there's a way to reduce the redundancy by changing the, the phrase in one of the places, talking about more homes rather than housing supply or something like that. Really minor suggestion, don't feel strongly about it.
Thank you. All right. Matt H? Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. In the, in the conclusion, I think the second point can just, is completely redundant. The commission encourages adoption. That was part of the, one of the first bullet points, so I would just So I would just take that out altogether.
Um. I'm just remembering Matt, where that came from, which is the, the last paragraph before, thank you for the opportunity to broad our comments. The commission encourages adoption of the final one Seattle plan as quickly as possible this year. Is our way of, or was our way of trying to strike that balance of not getting into the weeds on what supplemental environmental review might be required versus as an addendum to the EIS versus a supplemental EIS. Not wanting to weigh in on that, but rather to encourage that the plan get adopted this year. And then to look to next year to adopt key amendments that would, that might require additional environmental review. And we decided to simplify that instead of getting into the environmental review weeds. But that, that was the intent of that sentence. But if it doesn't, if it's too opaque, then we should either strengthen it or strike it.
But isn't it, isn't that kind of wonkiness in the first point, the adopt the final, the first, adopt the final one Seattle plan in its boldest form? Up above, we say, you know, to expedite this process, we recommend the city council reintroduce any amendments, blah, 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 blah. Just seems a little bit, you know, it feels like it's, it's covered elsewhere and, and I don't know, I would support striking it. If anything, I think the, the, the point that we're, that we're not making in the conclusion is, is that we want the, you know, like a summary. Want the boldest one Seattle plan that incorporates the, you know, incorporates the neighborhood centers, respects the community outreach, incentivizes housing, you know, something that we need like sort of a final hit. And this conclusion doesn't quite have that.
I just want to be clear, Matt, because my, my road numbering has gone askew because I've been in track changes. So I just opened up the version that you all are working on. And what you're suggesting is to strike lines 5, 6, and 7 on the third page. Because it's redundant to what's been said before.
Sorry, I don't, I don't have that available.
Yeah, yeah. So the commission encourages, the commission encourages adoption of the final one Seattle plan as quickly as possible this year. In addition to adopting key amendments that would increase housing supply and expand neighborhood centers. Is that the phrase that you're suggesting to start? Okay, thank you.
Yes, thanks.
Michaela is agreeing with Matt. So I'm going to take a pause here and invite commissioners. If there is a section that you want to revisit, because I did kind of drive us through the nine sections pretty quickly. And as I'm, as you're thinking about, if you have any more comments, just reminding everybody of what the process will be. So based on today's conversation, we staff will develop a final draft that will be posted on our website on Tuesday morning. That is our practice when we're taking final action on a letter. We post it on our website 48 hours in advance or as close to 48 as we can. So as to provide commissioners, sorry. So as to provide members of the public the opportunity to provide comments should, should they so choose. So the version that is posted on the website on Tuesday will also be sent to you all. And that will be the version that is voted on on Thursday at 8 o'clock. Edits are highly, highly discouraged at that point in the game. Quorum is highly encouraged so that we can approve the letter. And in order to approve the letter in that half an hour timeframe, it would, unless there's real heartbreak over, over an edit, over a phrase, it, the time, the time for tinkering is, is closing in 10 minutes. So that we really have a strong final on Tuesday that you all can approve on Thursday. And I see Dylan, you have a, you have a comment about Matt's comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, I, I agree with him with what he was saying. I think that point, about quickly as possible, it is made earlier. And there does seem to be that kind of mess, the kind of, I think maybe replacing this or rewording this this, this conclusion. So it is just kind of that last hit of like the major points that we're trying to make. This is what we're requesting. These are the points we're trying to summarize and make. I think, I think that is, would be more appropriate language and probably get it and get rid of the as quickly as possible. So I just want to make sure that it's not just striking, but it's rather kind of wordsmithing, replacing that with a, a final sort of concluding statement is what my suggestion would be. And I, I don't have the capacity to live edit it. My brain doesn't work like that. So I can maybe work on language to send after this meeting.
If, if anybody on the call does have have a proposed addition to the conclusion to strengthen it as where it sounds like we're removing that phrase of these screens. The phrase in the, in the conclusion that encourages adoption of the final one Seattle plan as quickly as possible. That where, where, and why I keep asking for the specific edits is because it's really challenging for staff to, at this stage in the game, to come up with something that is stronger or to come up with language that is not vetted by the full group. Because we don't have any more time to vet language as a full group. We won't have the opportunity next Thursday to do this, this level of significant changes of removing and adding sentences. It's really more an opportunity, it's really a formality to approve the letter that you all hopefully agree to by the end of today once, once we incorporate all the edits. Thank you, Zio. Zio has proposed in the conclusion, the commission supports the boldest form of the plan, one that reflects the vision cultivated through intentional engagement with the public, with a robust network of neighborhood centers and diverse housing types, and then envisions a Seattle that is affordable and accessible to all Seattleites. And I'm seeing
I give a thumbs up.
I'm seeing a thumbs up from Michaela and from Matt Malloy. And Nick. And Dylan. And Dylan, Dylan times two. So that's great. And a thumbs up from Matt as well. Excellent. All right. Thank you all. If you do have thoughts on the layout, as I mentioned earlier, the layout will change as we put it on letterhead and really make the sections more distinct. So meaning the section that talks about, you know, adopting the plan, supporting a robust network of neighborhood centers, respect the process. And then a separate section of we support the following proposed amendments. And we cannot support proposed amendments that would create more barriers to housing affordability. And then a conclusion. And also, so if you have thoughts on suggestions of how to lay that out, we've received some suggestions from Dylan and Michaela so far. Thank you. And if you do catch any typos, we'll be doing a final review. But more eyes are always welcome on that front. So in the final five minutes, wondering if there are any final words from anybody, thoughts? Something to start thinking about for you all. So don't get rid of that third draft yet. There are, there are parts of the third draft that can be pulled into public comment at the hearing. So we haven't yet identified commissioners who will provide that. The public hearing is on the 12th. And there will be, each individual will be given two minutes. The morning portion of the public hearing is dial-in only. And then the afternoon's portion of the hearing begins at 3:00 PM and is in-person only. So again, don't, don't toss away that third draft as there may be more details that you all would like to, to say to the council at the public hearing. Yeah. So Zio, I'm not hearing anything else, but I want to give people the last five minutes if there's something that they have. I see Michaela is typing. But I'll turn it back to you, Zio, to conclude and adjourn when you see that.
All right. Do, yeah, I guess do folks want a chance to sit with the, the meeting chat and the letter? Or are we, are we feeling good to go? I don't know, seems like we're feeling good to go. With that, I'll adjourn this meeting of the planning commission. Great work, everybody.
Thanks all. Thank you all very much. I know this is fair, this, this last portion of the meeting is of the letter development is always really challenging. So I appreciate your patience and continued engagement.
Everyone, hi.
Bye all.
Thanks y'all.
Thanks y'all.
Hi everyone.